Please.
Technology expansion for future-ready students. Wichita Public Schools will be expanding technology programs and innovative teaching strategies to prepare students for future-ready. Today's presentation will provide an overview of initiatives that will enable students to access technology, participate in active remote learning, and develop valuable skills to become responsible global citizens. It is recommended the board rename Wichita Virtual School to Education Imagine Academy effective immediately.
Welcome. We've been looking forward to this, so you're the sage on this stage now. We're excited.
Okay. President Logan, Dr. Thompson, members of the board. I put this first slide up here. This was a book I actually read this last semester, actually during the pandemic. And it was called Create the Future. And one of the things that I think we've realized over the last couple of months is that there's not going to be an old normal that we go back to. I think anytime a society or people are squeezed, innovation happens. And when you think of all of the things that we identify today, whether it be inequities in internet access or device access, when you think about how we work today even differently, I think about my, just my own personal life in the last couple of months, having my daughter Bailey, she's going to graduate this next year from Wichita Public Schools, my two daughters that are in college, and what college looks like for them in the fall, and how we prepare kids for a future that doesn't seem to be the same that we had both growing up and just in the last three years. I think it's significantly different. And so when you look at those things and think about the systems that were supporting those behaviors that we now need to change, things become different. I appreciate Dr. Irving talking about how we delivered professional development differently. It came out of a necessity, right? So we had to prepare teachers that might not have been ready in a digital literacy level to deliver content differently than what they had just previous to the spring break that they had had, right? So our ability to adjust that came at a significant cost of needing to provide a lot of professional development. And so as we move forward, we need to make sure that we keep those systems that helped us pivot and delivery of professional development in a hybrid environment, and also think about maybe even how we deliver education differently. And so we're going to talk about that today. I'm always going to talk about where we need to go first, and then I'll end up with how we support it. So when you look at this presentation, we have, you know, all of it, I aligned it to the strategic plan. And whenever you look at especially supporting both success for all learners, you look at college and career, and I would even say like there's a lifelong learning pattern to that college and career now that I think we need to look at and start to look at micro-learning and credentialing in some ways. Because I think students don't learn at the same content delivery level that we learned at, right? And so how we align those resources and infrastructure, and then supporting the social emotional aspect. I think it was even identified today that, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, out of a pandemic, there's a significant amount of anxiety that's built up, you know, in our kids, having to deal with that. I can't imagine having to graduate during a time that a pandemic is happening. And I think as our society, we need to make sure that we help our kids in that way. So how do we look at delivering content differently? I think looking at the virtual schools and how they provide. Today, there's Wichita Virtual School. We're going to look at having a name and a branding change. And really, there's a lot of different supports that this new model could bring. One, the innovative teaching strategy. So whenever you think about how we deliver content to students today, in a face-to-face, you have your traditional supports of how we scheduled before, you know, you have block scheduling, all that. Well, in a remote learning environment, that all changes, right? Even the amount of time that a kid needs to be engaged in that content changes. And so how do we change the systems and make sure that we can adopt those at a rate that the organization can adopt it? Well, one way you can do that is by creating a model that then you can work back from. And so today, we're going to announce a reboot of that virtual school, and it'll be Education Imagine Academy. And you look at both the active remote learning and how we develop those skills to be global citizens. Because I don't know about you guys today, but a lot of things are global now that wasn't before. I always give the example of whenever I moved to Omaha, I didn't change banks, even though there's not a Bank of America in Omaha. It really shouldn't have that name if there's not a, there's not one in Nebraska even. And so when you think about banking, I never visited a bank while I was in Omaha. I banked, you know, remote the entire time. And did it change how I behaved? No. And so how we operate needs to change in that way, too. When I showed this slide about transformation, instructional technology is an incredible link to the process of how you do things, right? So if I want to build a student or a teacher's digital literacy level, I start down the process path and I start to introduce small competencies that can get you to a certain level of awareness of how to do that differently on that device. And whether that be a traditional laptop or a modern computing device like Wendy and Dr. Thompson's using. And so whenever you think about that awareness and skill development, skill development, you're starting to build those strategies, right, of how I can do those things. And so I'm getting to a depth of knowledge. This map right here, awareness, skill development, implementation, institutionalization, is a depth of knowledge build. It's building on those structures. Now, whenever I get to implementation and institutionalization, I want you to understand that I have to, instructional technology, the process, can't teach an algebra teacher what the right content delivery and practice is for an algebra competency. It's important to build the model of someone that does it every day, like a virtual school teacher, to be able to build that context to that content back so that they're building the right, best practices for that teacher to be able to deliver it. So if I had a teacher that came to me and said, hey, I want you to teach me how to do blended learning in my classroom, absolutely, that can happen from an instructional technology standpoint. But whenever you look at, how do I do that in the context of my specific content area? It's important and it's a great advantage to have virtual school teachers that do that every day. And so one of the things out of this Education Imagine Academy is that we're going to build those subject matter experts in those area, key content areas, that are the people that really know how to deliver that specific content in the right timeframes, right? So we talked about remote learning and there's a different engagement area, and also have the supports of instructional technology to make sure that all the processes are there and we're doing it in an efficient way. So from a staff standpoint, I'd say it's a great support of how we could do that organizationally. When you think about students, and I, you know, if I had to do it over again, I honestly would have to think about if I had the ability to run my kids through a virtual school hindsight, I would probably do it, to be honest with you. Because when you think about our students and the intrinsic nature of what online learning makes you do, because at that point, you, your motivation is there to learn. And you're not driven by either the structures of the day that I have to go and it's got to be over this time. But then also, when you think about post-secondary, look at, I'm going to give WSU for example, they're going to come face-to-face, and then second semester, they're going to drop back to online. So how are those kids prepared to go down that intrinsic motivation to be able to continue down those courses? It'd be an interesting data point to understand. How are you doing face-to-face? And then once that shift happens, what does that look like? Well, I'd say if you were in that environment the whole time learning, no change would happen, right? And probably today, in a lot of our virtual education courses, there wasn't much shift that had to happen whenever we went to remote learning. And what are those skills that are necessary for a student that we are a product of, producing a product of today? I think a lot of those are important. You think of collaboration, communication. Those have even changed in the last couple of months, you know, especially how we communicate. We're going to get ready to implement email for all students and thinking about a level of digital literacy that comes with that, with being able to communicate effectively electronically. We enable teams so that they can have conversations, and that happened successfully this last year. But I think as, whenever you think about that communicator that's key, it's making sure that those kids know how to build a positive digital footprint. We'll talk about how we're doing that here shortly. But thinking about resiliency, I think, you know, resiliency over this time and being a civic and contributor to society is important. Digital responsibility is huge, and computational thinking, the jobs that haven't been created yet and are being created more than likely will require some form of computational thinking. So I have a lot of philosophy things around that. I won't get into that today. Thinking about where our kids are at. So I always show this graph because I think our kids are in a day and age where you have a significant amount of change in the digital aspect of our society to where you and I understand what a face-to-face and a digital environment and the differences are there, but our students don't. I think it's important to realize that. Like Bailey, my daughter, she's graduating this year. She has not known life without, because she came into kindergarten and a smartphone was already there for everyone, right? So when you look at how she engages with that technology, her social aspect as a child, communicating with one another, is probably heavy on the digital front, and significantly even more because of the COVID crisis. And will probably continue like that over time, just because once you put things into practice and it becomes a habit, that habit continues to form. And so how do we make sure that our kids are prepared? Well, I think we've got to help all of our staff understand those digital literacy competencies to help them understand what meaningful conversations look like in a digital atmosphere, making sure that they understand the good and the bad things that can happen in that, and how to make sure that you're just a good contributor. And so how do we do that effectively? And the virtual schools will introduce a new position that will help these students both social emotionally, but probably one every hundred to 150 students that will keep those students on pace, but also will help them social emotionally. I think there's a huge component of that, especially with a virtual school student, because there's less face-to-face time that I'm having that engaging conversation with. And so whenever you look at the supports that are needing through that flexibility, you're giving a lot of student advocacy in a virtual school. So students have a lot of choice, make the choice whether they engage that day or they don't engage that day. And sometimes you have that in the face-to-face, but there's a lot more interaction if I'm just staring at Jimmy in the back of the classroom saying, you know, are you paying attention? There's not that in a virtual atmosphere. And so how you put the right supports in place, it's pretty significant. This is the same model that was done at Andover Academy and also Omaha Virtual School. So the roles of that, whenever you look at that, you can see that there, recommend student interventions, working with families. It's creating that family dynamic that was just discussed earlier, making sure that there's a unit there to support that child. I think that became very resonant over the last month and a half that we had of the importance of family and also the dynamics of a family that work and learn together in the same household. And so when we talk about internet access, there's some degrees of difficulty with that, too, of whenever you say whether a person has access or not. What constitutes broadband if I have five people in my family and I have workers that are working remotely and children that are also trying to learn remotely? I think there's a, it's a complicated question, right? And so just making sure that you've got the right supports in place. Course offerings, we're going to open up. We have just a few courses here that are kind of innovative course offerings. Right now, we just did a request for the Student Information System. The number of course codes is, there's 77 new courses that will open up inside of Edge Newity that would offer both opportunities to our virtual kids, school kids, and possibly opportunities for our comprehensive high schools. And I'll get into that. So today, if we open up those opportunities and I have one or two kids in those classes, I can have Edge Newity help us teach those classes through a contracted way. Once you reach a certain level of caseload for a student, we could hire into that. And at no time, you know, is there a transition of that because the courses are the same. And so once that happens, then you can open up all the other slots for that teacher that you've hired to then your comprehensive high schools that then would offer that opportunity, which I would say all the 77 that we offer are not current courses in the district. So each one of those that we get a good-sized caseload that then we can open up to the rest of the comprehensive high schools offer more opportunities for high schools. And so then at that point, I would say it'd be a great idea for us to look at a flex-skenge model to where those comprehensive high schools could then go from either a block to a flex-skenge. And then those kids could be facilitated in a classroom that could be four, could be 12. Different courses are being held in that classroom, and you're just have someone there to help facilitate the gaps or technical needs that that student needs to help them progress. And so that opens up, as much as I love magnet themes, they also limit, right? And so anytime that we can offer courses and be flexible for students, because if a student has a choice and you have that student advocacy there, then that student's going to intrinsically want to learn about that if they have the choice to take that course. So how does this model differ? We'll deliver a modern computing device to these students with wide course offerings, obviously. Coding will be a huge piece of this, and esports, and we'll talk about that at another time. But having device and always on internet will be built in this. I actually didn't bring it down, but the device that we'll talk about that we're, just after this, is up there. I'll grab it shortly. That, Mike, you were talking about, it's odd to have a device that just has always on internet. Well, they make them today, so we'll show that to you. But looking at these students, having, giving them the opportunity to have a device and the access with that device takes away any kind of excuse or roadblock that a student has from being able to say that they can't learn that in that way. And there's highly engaging ways. You know, today is not a day that a teacher needs to feel like they should be challenged by the delivery of content by the internet, right? So today, if you hopped on YouTube, you know, I'll give this example. Two weeks ago, my washer was broke. What did I do? I didn't call somebody. I just looked on YouTube at first and said, okay, I have this air code. What do I need to do? Seven dollars later from Amazon, and I replaced a part and it's fixed. Never in a lifetime would you have ever have thought that you could do that without the internet. You wouldn't. You would have called your closest friend or called somebody and had them come out and do it. But today, we have the most widely available information ever in life. So I think it's important to have the availability that our students could have access to that. Reach. So we're looking at about a 50-mile radius right now outside of Wichita. I think that is probably good for when you think about testing at first and where we go from here. Whenever I helped start Andover Academy, I want to say we went to Dodge City and Hays, and we had teachers there and also some teachers in Kansas City to help facilitate testing. But this would allow us to still have testing and some of those face-to-face interactions that are purposeful, and people be able to travel within the day to be able to do that, so. We also would start marketing pretty immediately. I've been working extensively with the staff, great staff that are transferring over. They're a great team. Our communications department has been amazing. Shout out to Suzie and Wendy and her team for getting the new website ready. I think it will go live probably after this board meeting, if not already. And so we have a student interest form that's live on that site, and parents will be able to go in and put information into the student interest form, and we'll get back with them on more opportunities there. And so that concludes the piece of the virtual school. And I'm going to go into some of the things that we've been doing since COVID and through this summer is digital parenting and citizenship, professional learning opportunities for our parents. So we've been doing those. I think episode five comes out tomorrow, and we'll have that out for parents. It's kind of the digital direction the district is doing. So we did one on esports before. We've done one on digital well-being, making sure what the screen time looked like. We've done one on digital citizenship, building the right positive footprint for students. And so we'll continue those and continue down that path.
Rob, could I stop you because you really covered a lot of stuff with the new virtual school.
Yep.
And I'd like to give the board an opportunity to ask some questions if they have them at this point, just specifically about that before you move on to the other. I'll start. Maybe it's me only. But I just want to clarify in my mind, because looking at your what's available slide, which is where you list off esports and everything else. Clarify for me so that I'm clear what it is. Yeah, thank you. The, a student comes into us as a freshman, and they want to go into our virtual. And do we provide the basic Algebra I, English II, all those kinds of courses through Edge Newity?
Those will be face-to-face courses with our teachers, those core courses.
So you're really talking about a hybrid then?
Yeah.
Sometimes in school, sometimes on internet?
Yes and no. So I would say sometimes it will be face-to-face. Those would be at a frequency much different than our comprehensive high schools. So you know, comprehensive high schools, students come in every day and learn face-to-face every day.
It's based on seat time.
It's still, you still would have a virtual function of those core classes. It would just be at a less frequency.
So teachers would, much like we're doing now, guide the instruction for those, what I'm calling, basic courses? The pieces that you have to have to graduate.
Correct.
And, but the student would still be working virtually on those, correct?
Correct.
With the guidance of a teacher? And you had listed two different kinds of people that help our students, the student learning advocate and the virtual school teachers. Tell me the difference between those two.
So one is obviously not a teacher. In Omaha Public Schools, it was kind of a quasi-social worker. So a person that would help meet the needs of that student, whether it be socially and emotionally, or whether it be through some anxieties that they might have, but also helping them keep pace. You know, like doing the, that person would have a visibility of data that a single teacher wouldn't have.
So they could look at the whole child and begin to put those social emotional pieces and the anxiety and the, just the, you know, I'm going through being 13-years-old and don't know what I'm doing, kind of thing.
They would also know, in the other courses, the pacing of that student. So being able to understand, like, it could be one course or it could be multiple courses, and then you would need to identify what interventions you need to put in place for that student.
Okay, so that's our watching out for the whole child piece. Then I am assuming with that knowledge that the virtual school teachers would be the math teacher, the English teacher, the social studies teacher, and so on. Okay. Then on top of that, we're adding in the other pieces that you talk about, correct?
Those electives, right? Course offerings, design thinking and STEM.
Yes.
Cybersecurity.
Yes. Do they choose an area that they want to go into? I want to go into esports.
Yeah.
Or I want to go into programming or whatever.
I would say we'll develop some micro-pathways. And it wouldn't, some of those will be CTE pathways, but some of them won't just because some of those courses CTE hasn't acknowledged as a pathway yet, so you wouldn't be able to. But as the state begins to adopt some of those CTE pathways, we'd probably start to evolve those. But until then, you haven't identified all the necessary prerequisites for those pathways, so they'll just become micro-pathways. So it'll be like, you know, I want to make sure you get into coding before you go into game design, right?
So those would be what we currently would call electives?
Yes.
So that gives us our whole package of being able to graduate from high school if you went through this as a freshman on.
Yes.
What if you're a junior and you want to jump into this?
You would need to look at where the student is at credit-wise and make sure that they're set up for success. A student could accelerate through the program, obviously. But it's making sure that they have the right structures in place to be able to commit to that.
And I assume that your student learning advocate would be the one that would help guide them through that?
There is a counselor, a halftime counselor that's transferring.
Okay, so because I'm looking at the future, we're going to have some students who will want to move into this at different grade levels.
Sure.
Not necessarily starting at the beginning and moving through.
Yep. I want to identify that this is not for credit recovery. It's for original credit.
Right. But assuming that you get a junior who's taken all the courses for freshmen and sophomore and is, excuse me, in the ballpark, they could then move into this, begin to learn virtually, continue to get their core classes as well as their elective pieces.
Yep.
Okay. Is this for high school only?
No. It is K through 12.
Okay.
So we'll have elementary students. We'll run through connections. We have two elementary teachers. There's middle school teachers, and we're looking at, there will be some opportunities that we'll be able to provide in middle school that weren't there before. But a lot of your new opportunities are in high school.
Okay. So this fall, we're opening at K-12?
Yes.
Wow. We just love to reinvent school, don't we?
I cannot imagine another year one like the one I've had, so.
We're so glad you're here. Thank you very much for your hard work. Okay, I will pass to Ron.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying about all the grade levels. So it is accessible from K to 12. Also, so Edge Newity will be the primary platform for learning?
B for secondary. We'll use Pearson Connections for elementary.
Okay, so K through eight, Pearson, is that what you said?
We're, there may be some, because we currently have both, there may be some introductions of a little bit of both at the middle school level, dependent upon looking at those extra opportunities out there. We might have some opportunities in Edge Newity and also Connections in there. So I don't want to limit those opportunities.
So Edge Newity is for secondary for high school?
The nice thing, the district adopting that and being able to do that, and we used it for remote learning is it's easier to open it up because all those course codes will already be in the Student Information System. And so I still can treat that quasi-virtual school student at a comprehensive high school that's taking that virtual opportunity, they're still a comprehensive high school student. They're not really considered a virtual school student, but because the model has changed, it looks different, but it's really not.
Okay. And I take it both of these are bilingual, have multi-language access and things like that?
Absolutely.
Okay. The other thing is, is that, so with Edge Newity, is it up to the discretion of the teacher to maybe incorporate like the Microsoft Teams or Google Classroom or any other kind of online tools that they see fit, or how's that going to work?
So we will structure teams as a primary vehicle for this, and I'll tell you why. We're, this summer, implementing a lot of integrations. I don't want to get too technical, but one is one-roster integration. So once an assignment is assigned, it'll flow through teams and then back into the gradebook without the teacher having to do anything. So there's a significant amount of efficiency that comes into that. Think about the amount of time that teachers spend grading.
Yeah.
That'll be a huge integration piece that flows into this. And then you'll get class insights on that student. So I'll be able to tell you how much time the student engaged on that activity because I've recorded both the amount of time that they spent within there. So I'm, in a virtual school, I'm recording a lot of time that I wouldn't have otherwise recorded, you know, in a face-to-face standpoint. So I'm trying to get as much data from that side as I can to, well, and Susan will appreciate this, to be accurate on time as far as, you know, how much time. Susan will appreciate this, to be accurate on time as far as, you know, how much of a student we're actually getting, so.
You said also that, um, it's not for credit recovery, but can a student accelerate? And so they, can they get, can they graduate at a junior, as a junior?
They can accelerate, yes.
All right, thank you.
Ben?
Yes, Ben Blankens, District One. Um, as we expand our usage of edgenuity, Pearson Connections, Dreambox, Lexia for all learners, um, these are things that are essentially um, on somewhat auto-renewal in terms of when they come to us for an additional funding component. Um, so what kind of, uh, reporting and evaluation uh, of these particular portals or tools are we planning to make sure that they're the best fit for our kids in our district?
I think that really goes through a process of working with curriculum and instruction. And as we start to, uh, revisit curriculum, I think there's, uh, thinking about how we do things different and thinking about this virtual school. I think there's a conversation of, okay, how that content is delivered today. If we want that experience to be different, then we need to look at what are the requirements of how we want it to be different? And then let's put those up so that we can make sure that we're making a decision as a district to what that curriculum development needs to look like and if that needs to shift. So I think there's a lot of opportunities there, um, especially probably in the next five years as we start to look at blended learning as being a core component of just how a class is done.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike?
As you were talking about grading, I, something hit me right between the eyes. You know, we started SRG. How does this implement with that?
No, it's graded. It's actually mastery and, and, and how you do blended learning actually coincide with each other quite a bit because as I progress, like we talked about, uh, the student, uh, accelerating. If that student truly has mastered that standard, they should progress. We shouldn't go back and revisit that with that student. So that's, that student should progress and it should start to build on each other. So, uh, I think it works, uh, fine. I would say there are some, there's some work that, uh, Christie O'Toole and, uh, the Curriculum and Instruction Team and us need to work on. On making sure that how courses currently have percentages or grades correspond to SRG in some way, knowing that not everyone does SRGs. And so how that correlates back to each other, I think there's, there's some work to be done there. But we've identified those.
Okay. My other question is, is, you know, you've talked about social and emotional. And when that comes up in my mind with computer systems and home-based learning and kids down in the basement learning their schoolwork, are we going to require any face-to-face classes for these kids to where they, you know, I remember several years ago, and I don't know if we still do it or not, but we had, they, the state board wanted us to have a handshaking class. And, you know, those types of things, because our kids don't know how to do that.
Your core classes will still have, uh, Wichita Public Schools teacher with it and there will be a blended component of it. So there will be face-to-face activities.
Go to a building, have to leave their depths of their.
Yeah, they will.
That's a bleak picture, I apologize.
For those classes taught by our teachers and not by edgenuity or someone else, those would be blended sessions. So really, we, and we haven't really come up with the frequency yet. Uh, it could be once a month, it could be once every two weeks. And remember, that doesn't have to be structured in the same day that we think of a day, right? We think of a school day and it has to be seven-hour periods and, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to be like that. It could be, it could be three hours of just facilitation. So that, there will be those pieces. And every student will have some type of blended component to it.
Okay. And my last question is, you know, as I sit here and think of myself and how I would get around things, how do we know that the child is actually taking the classes and not having somebody else do the work twice? Or how do we know that, that I am the one that is actually getting the grades?
Yep. So that goes into your checks for understanding. So when you either have that face-to-face or even, I can do that in a team session where I'm video back and forth. That teacher puts in place those checks for understanding or does a small formative assessment uh, that is there that they see in real time to, to get that checks for understanding for that child. And very easily, you know, a very good teacher is going to be able to identify that pretty quick.
Thank you.
Ernestine, did you have any questions? Ernestine, are you still with us? I, I think she dropped off.
I heard the dial tone go off.
Wendy, would you follow up with her to make sure? Okay, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of logistical questions. Um, the, we currently have a staff in our virtual program. Will they be moving over to this?
Yes, seven of them will be moving over to the ISC building. Uh, and it, this program would be moving to the ISC building, uh, from Chester Lewis.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
Yep.
Uh, so will we have an administrative team there too, or?
Um, we are currently in the process of interviewing, uh, program managers for this position. So there'll be a program manager that would be assigned to it.
Okay. And, and all of our teaching staff and our, uh, student learning advocate staff would be housed at the ISC then?
Yes, correct.
How many staff are we talking about?
Um, I want to say with that, there would be eight total, maybe nine.
And it would grow as our program grew?
Absolutely, right.
Okay.
The goal would be, uh, to try to grow this model by about a hundred students a year. That a way it's, it's one that we can facilitate.
And it may grow much faster than, depending on what happens with our world.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Um, you do want us to vote today to change the name of the virtual school to Education Image Academy, correct?
Education Imagine Academy, yep, absolutely.
Imagine Academy, sorry.
Be great, no.
Okay. Uh, Mike, you, you have a question before we do that?
Yeah, Cheryl made me, uh, made me think here when she asked her logistics question and we've, uh, the ISC building is not a very good building. And we've tried to unload it over the years and not done very well at it because we keep finding ways to use it. Why wouldn't we move this into AMAC?
Some more programming that I'll share with you next month is a big reason. Uh, but we found a way through open architecture to wire the room and wire those large rooms to where they can accommodate that, that building. Probably within the next month, they'll have the best wireless infrastructure in the, in the entire district. And so, uh, by doing open architecture wiring, um, it gives us the ability to not have to adhere to any ceiling. And it looks good in a high-technology environment. And so, uh, that's, that kind of helps us facilitate what's needed in that space, so.
Well, and the reason I bring that up and, and nothing against what you're doing, I mean, I, I'm, I'm fully behind it. Um, but the building bothers me. Now that we're talking about that building, I had no idea before Cheryl asked the question. You know, the air conditioners have died, they're dying, they're, we're having all sorts of rough leaks.
It, it does have new air conditioning.
It does. I was going to say, we, we've, you all, not me, but you all over the last, uh, year or so have, have, um, kind of done some things to the building. Um, and so while they were small little chunks of things, it was able to give, keep, keep the infrastructure and the, and the, I guess the, the build is still there. So what, what we're going to be doing is making it come back alive a little bit. So we're just breathing into it and it's really going to be quite cool and something that we will be very, very proud of. But because you did keep the infrastructure, uh, kind of strong, uh, we're able to utilize what's there and make it come alive. So you'll, you'll be impressed when you, over time, slowly but surely.
And I guess the good news is, is with it being a virtual school, we don't have to worry about any parking there, so.
Right, right. And it's flexible, everything will be flexible seating, so no matter which programming we're talking about.
Thank you very much.
Yep. You've probably taken five or six vacations this year, haven't you? AMAC, right? Well, this is exciting. Thank you so much. And I stopped you halfway through your presentation.
Yeah, it's okay.
But I knew we would get questions on that particular area. Please begin again.
Um, starting to look at, uh, device strategy. So, uh, this has been a, a different kind of year thinking about device strategy. We, uh, looked before at providing some choice and, and delivering an experience that had the weight of understanding what needs to happen in that face-to-face environment and trying to meet the needs there. Especially when you think about CTE or some of our magnet teams, computing and learning kind of go hand in hand today. And so when you think about, um, what happened during COVID, it identified some inequities that we had in our homes, right? So whenever you think about, uh, student access, uh, this statistic here is staggering. The number of, uh, students that don't have broadband access. And it's a complicated question. We've actually, this year in our online enrollment, we've introduced a question to try to ask the question of broadband. And what I would tell you is it's, it's complicated, A, because you don't know the digital literacy level of the parent to understand how they would answer that question. But you also don't know what activities need to happen in that home holistically with that internet connection. Do they, are they, you know, completely cordless on their TV and they're watching TV and, and it's using broadband? Or, or do I have three or more, two or more kids at home and they're using broadband for learning? And is my family remote working? And so those questions complicate that answer, uh, to understand, even if I have broadband, it might not necessarily be the right broadband. If I look down at all the opportunities that Cox or AT&amp;T provide, is that bottom tier enough? And I could say yes in some ways and I could say no in some ways.
And I'm going to stop you again. I apologize.
That's okay.
We've got to get Ernestine back on, so we're going to take a couple of minute break here so that she can hear what you're saying.
Absolutely.
I apologize. Okay.
So when you think about that digital divide and what happens in that home and how we need to support it, that became the highest weight for us in how we're moving forward with those devices. And so, um, looking at our previous timeline, we were looking at a, a phase-in approach of about a year and a half, right? Looking at how we do that and how we provide. And so today we come up with a new timeline. And, um, it's a much shorter timeline, uh, looking at how we could provide, uh, digital equity and access. And so when you look at, um, when you look at the device and, and, uh, I'll grab the device real quick. When we had to restructure how we were going to look at the requirements of the device, um, it became, uh, very apparent that, uh, the vendors that are out there today don't make what's called an LTE device. So if you know what 4G is, it came out in 2010. It was actually the first time in history anybody could watch a YouTube video anywhere, right? Before you were hinged to wifi somewhere, your phone had wifi or, or your device had wifi and you were at home. But when, uh, devices came out that had LTE capability on them, then you had anywhere, anytime access. Uh, generally, that is, uh, to your remote workers and executive workers a lot of times. And so the device that you see here today is an HP 440 and, and we went through a lot of devices. I had instructional technology team go through and vet the devices on what the experience was like. This is obviously, uh, a great device, um, works well. But, but when you look at how we shift as a, as a learning institution, uh, we have to be agile. And so this device allows us to be agile because, one, um, as you probably know, if you have your own cell phone, most cell phones come with what's called a, a SIM card inside of it. And so when you change phones, your vendor takes out that SIM card and puts it in, into a new one. Well, recently there's been technology advances that allows for an eSIM to happen. And that allows me to provision, uh, that device for internet service without having to visit it. So, uh, these devices that we've selected support eSIM. So it has the ability for me to, without even setting to it, provision it via the cloud to that internet service remotely. So I can, I can turn that around in about 24 hours. So that allows us to be agile. So even if we decide as an institution that we want to use data to select which kids have access and which ones, you know, that we're providing and not, it allows us to be agile in that way. And so, uh, it also is the least, uh, cost for the internet service itself. And so as we look at internet service on a monthly basis, yearly basis, that cost becomes significantly cheaper with an eSIM device because I'm not supporting an extra device that has to be charged. Uh, it's also not another device that could be lost or stolen. And so, uh, one great thing about this device is all of these will be hashed in our mobile device management system. I don't expect you to know what that means, but here's what it means non-technically. If this device were stolen or lost, because it has an always-on internet connection, the moment it comes back on and it connects to the internet and if somebody were to format it, it just reinitializes itself back into the MDM and then tells me where it's at. To a pretty accurate location because, uh, cell signal is way more accurate than wifi signal is. So from a cell tower, I can tell you pretty much where you're at. And so that device, if, if this were taken or stolen, it really, it is of no use to whoever took it because I can brick it, uh, I can even tell you where it is. So, uh, all of those devices that we would purchase have that capability. And any of the surface devices that we just purchased have, uh, a similar function in that, in that they're hashed into that mobile device management system. So we, uh, also applied for the bottom piece, which is phase four Verizon Innovative Learning. Uh, all 12 of our middle schools that we applied for have made it to round two. And so, uh, we'll continue down that process, but any of those schools that are identified, we would then move these devices that are at those middle schools to our elementary schools to help facilitate that at those elementary schools that know. Uh, so that's kind of the plan that we have around there. Um, our Surface Pro devices that we have, uh, have been great. Dr. Thompson, have you liked yours so far? So, uh, we've also been giving about 90 minutes of professional development on what a modern computing device, uh, does for you, uh, because you compute differently. I, I would write on that device, I talk to that device, it's cloud-first environment. It's very much like if I had a laptop and an iPad and a desktop, it's all of that in one. So I can produce my podcasts, do video work, all those high computing needs, but also have the mobility of walking around, taking the, the keyboard off, being able to use it as a tablet, all those things. So, uh, so, and, and being able to wirelessly display. We're working this summer on getting all the elementary schools ready to wireless display. And, uh, we'll start to evolve their secondary schools in the same way. So then a teacher can just walk around the classroom, wirelessly display and facilitate learning, not necessarily lean on the lecture as much. Any questions on any of that? So I think I have a slide for a recommendation, but I think that's actually Susan's. Okay. So I think you approved the, the Wichita Virtual School to Education Imagine Academy. But I'll, uh, open it up for any questions on the device rollout.
Okay, we do have some questions and we do need to vote on changing that name
Yeah.
as a separate motion. And then we would, when Susan does her presentation, vote on the funding. So we have two separate things, one of them now, one of them after Susan's. Uh, Mike, did you have a question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments on being able to find the laptop if it's stolen or lost.
Yeah.
Because that was, that's number one. And again, this is a question fostered out of finance more than it is about caring about technology. You know, are, do we have ways, because it's an always-on SIM card, do we have ways of controlling that? Say, we've got somebody that's using our, apparently we're paying for the, for the cost of the SIM card and the, and the data. So if, if I've got somebody that's, a student that's working six hours a day like they're supposed to, or seven hours a day on their computer, you know, that's what I'm expecting to pay for. But if I've got a student that's running 24 hours a day and downloading music and playing video games and, can we control that?
Yeah. So we are, uh, shifting our filtering solution to Securely right now. It's a cloud-based filtering solution, that's always-on filtering. It also gives me the statistics on how much engagement's happening over that time and I can limit that based upon an amount of time. Hmm, I, I can also do some things I probably won't talk about here where I could give that parent the ability to have measures that they can select for their child to put in place as well.
Okay, so the, you know, so we wouldn't, like, this computer's been on now for two hours and I've looked at a presentation, a couple of presentations on it.
Sure.
And I'm hoping that we have ways of controlling that at the house where if it's just sitting there on, we're not paying for.
Right. Uh, the plans that we're looking at have, uh, unlimited on them at a low cost. There's, uh, a plan called Empowered Two, which is a national plan, uh, that would allow at the low cost that we would get on any other device would be unlimited data for that student, so.
Now, you showed a map earlier and does that map have anything to do with this? Um, the receivability, so if I, so if my parents decide to go on vacation next week to Denver, Colorado, or to Pueblo, Colorado, which is a smaller town, um, I could take this device and still do my schoolwork and?
It would be a nationwide plan, yes.
Okay.
Ben?
Yes, um, Ben Blankley District One. Um, so last week I was working remotely and I had my kiddo on his tablet playing Minecraft. And of course, I'm a responsible digital parent, so I had a time limit set on it. Um, we did. And, uh, the time ran up and the kiddo, because he hasn't had much for social, emotional learning, took his tablet and cracked the screen. So it is now currently being repaired, um, for not an insignificant amount of money.
Yep.
So, uh, my question holistically for the district is, what is our plan for damage or that kind of?
These devices in this purchase, both the Surface and these devices have accidental protection on them.
Okay, alright.
Ron?
Uh, yes, I was just, uh, about a second, we were talking about the digital divide. Sorry about that. Uh, thanks for talking about the digital divide. And I was just wanting to, um, uh, make sure that, um, we kind of understand that there are some parents and students as well. Well, I, I think sometimes we just assume that if they're young people, they know how to navigate these computers and so on and so forth. But, um, it's been my experience is that you have some students that aren't digitally literate or internet literate or whatever you want to say, tech-savvy. Uh, and as well as their parents. And so sometimes you have that disconnect between, uh, them being engaged, you know, going back to what, uh, some of the data Dr. Irving was, uh, giving to us, that, you know, that, that's kind of an underlying problem. And if they're not comfortable using these things, uh, they're not gonna use them. And they're not gonna be engaged. And it, and if you call or try to contact, they're, they don't wanna talk to you because, you know.
Right.
They, they kind of suspect, okay, I'm not, my kid's not working on it, I don't wanna talk to you. But, um, is there gonna be something for parents that might not be, especially bilingual people? They, you know, they, they might not get that, understand. Because for one, they might look at technology, oh, my, all my kid might just use it for playing games, like kind of what Mike was saying. Um, but I guess that goes with a lot of parents. So is there something that we have that's gonna, you know, uh, introduce the parents to this technology, to this, and specifically the, the device that we purchased?
Yeah, so we are, uh, currently hiring, uh, digital literacy and citizenship coordinator position.
Okay.
And instructional technology will fall underneath that. But we've started down a digital parenting path this last year and will continue that. Um, we've been limited face-to-face based upon social distancing and those types of things. But I don't see it out of the realm of not having some of those face-to-face times specifically, especially in our schools or outside of our schools to make sure that we're providing programming to our parents on how to be responsible digital parents, how to make sure your kids are engaged in those courses. So I think you'll see that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we rename the Wit, the Wichita Virtual School to the Education Imagine Academy effective immediately.
Okay, we do have a motion on the floor, but we have a comment, uh, from Ernestine that I'd like to recognize, recognize before we get a second. Ernestine?
Uh, you called us, yes. I just had one more question. Is, can, can, um, assuming that we're gonna have some time in the classroom, maybe right away in the fall, but at some point, can all of these things, uh, all of these, uh, of our gadgets, of our, our, uh, tablets? What, what are we gonna call them? What are they called? They're not laptops and they're not tablets, so.
I would call them modern computing devices.
Okay. At any rate, our computing devices, will they be able to be used by teachers in the classroom so that the teacher could have all of the students have, have one? And the teacher could, could, uh, say, put a problem on each of the, uh, computing devices at the students at their desk, for example?
Absolutely.
One of the, uh, go ahead.
Absolutely. I, I definitely see that happening.
Well, I see that as a tremendous advantage because you know that kids learn about these things very fast. And once that they learn it in the classroom, then they can probably teach the parents at home.
Yeah.
I would agree with you, yeah.
Okay. Uh, Julie, do you have any questions? Nope. Okay, I do, there is a motion on the floor to change the name of the Wichita Virtual School to Education Imagine Academy. I do need a second for that motion.
Ben Blankley District One, I second.
Okay, the motion was ba, made by Mike Rody and seconded by Ben Blankley. Uh, would you please, is there further? I don't see any other discussion, so let's cast our votes, starting with Ron.
Ron Rosales, Sixth District, yes.
Stan Reesert, District Four, yes.
Cheryl Logan, At Large, yes.
Mike Rody, District Five, yes.
Ben Blankley, District One, yes.
Julie and Ernestine?
Go ahead, Julie.
Julie Hendrick, District Two, yes.
Ernestine Crable, District Three, yes.
We have a seven-zero vote to continue to change that name, so, thank you. And thank you very much for this presentation. I mean, how exciting. We're really talking about a whole new way of school. Thank you.